On October 3rd, 2023, the regular city council meeting of the city council of West Liberty, Iowa. I'm Mayor Ethan Anderson, and we have with us tonight Councilmember Dana Dominguez, Ashley Smith, Josh Shilts, and Omar Martinez, as well as City Manager Lee Gertz, City Clerk Sherry Hofer, and our Chief of Police, Chief of Police Eric Worling. Thanks for everybody for being here. Can I get an approval of the agenda?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries forward to zero. I'll ask for an approval of the consent agenda, including the city council meeting minutes from September 19th and the special city council meeting minutes from September 12th. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries forward to zero. We have a, I'm very happy to say, we have a new police officer joining us this week in the city of West Liberty, so I want to welcome you up here. We'll have your swearing in right here in front of these flags. This is Rustville Calderon, and comes from, where are you from?
Los Angeles, California.
Los Angeles, California.
I lived there for four years. Sorry.
I was, yeah, no, you're good. So go easy on it. I was super happy that Rustville was, you know, took the job. Thought it was a, seemed like a really good fit, so we're excited to have you here. Is there a little tippy on the roof there? Are you okay? Does that look all right? All right. All right. Just have your right hand, and then just repeat after me. I, Rustville Calderon.
I, Rustville Calderon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties.
Discharge all duties.
As police officer for the city of West Liberty, Iowa.
As police officer for the city of West Liberty, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Presenting Officer Calderon, which with what will be his badge. There you go. Before we're done, I just asked if the officers who are here could come up. I just want to get a picture of the whole crew who's here tonight. We can. Yeah.
Only a dollar. Only a dollar.
Only a dollar, what?
I got a scratch off ticket because I had to replace my hot water heater today. I only wanted a dollar.
What are we talking about over there? Get it? Thank you. Welcome to West Liberty. Appreciate it.
No getting in.
I have it.
Text in with, yeah, sure. She'll have a official paper for you to sign.
We'll move on to, what was this about?
Literally my hot water heater exploded last night. I had to replace it today, so I got a scratch off card at Casey's in case it would make up for it, and I won a dollar. So 999 more to go for that water heater. The ticket was a dollar. I don't want to get a dollar. What? Yeah, I broke, right. I didn't want to hear about the fact I'm not actually winning.
Since she opened it in public at a city council meeting, I think it belongs to the city of West Liberty, am I right? This is only appropriate. Okay, moving on. We're gonna go to reports. We have reports in front of us from the city manager. Police, Parks, Parks and I T Streets. Hope everybody had a chance to review. Are there, is Leo, is Leo joining us tonight?
Apparently not. I have not had any communication.
Okay. All right.
Nope, that one's just happening.
Okay. All right, questions from council on these reports?
I have a question for the chief actually. Available.
Chief?
Yes.
Um, so when you say driven miles, 94,000 total miles, what does that mean? Can you explain that?
So I checked in with the manufacturer about how idling affects engines, and this would go for, I'm sure, to ambulance and fire equipment as well. Every hour that the engine spends idling, it's roughly 30 miles of wear and tear on the engine.
Gotcha.
And that's for the manufacturer, so that's why I have the actual miles on the vehicle, the idle time, which all of your cars at home will tell you that same exact thing.
Yeah, so it's like 15,000 of idle hours times 30.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's, yep.
Thank you.
Question about the West Liberty Sports Complex and the 750 K transformer. Is that like a year out? Is that like six months out? Is it soon? Is it? Look, we have Councilmember Smith, we have that in inventory right now.
Oh, cool.
And so interim superintendent John Mead and myself met with the school superintendent and the contractors, and so there is a plan in place with the inventory, 750 K. We just have a few more things to go over about the transformer.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Excellent. Any other questions? Do we have committee meetings that have reports? I don't think so, do we? Okay, again, these reports are great. We'll move on to vendor voucher claims. We have vendor voucher claims list number one for $329,524.84. Is there a motion to approve?
Okay.
Moved and seconded to approve claims list number one. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries forward to zero. We have vendor voucher claims list number two and the amount of $315. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries by four to zero. Public comments and correspondence. Is there anyone here in the room tonight with a public comment? We'll go with the council. Ashley, any public comments?
No.
Other comments?
City Manager Gertz, I had someone asked about, or like asked, but they couldn't remember. So when trees are removed, back when kind of started doing this on some of the streets, is there a plan in place to replace some of those trees?
I think I-
City will do, or?
Yep, I think I have Nick on, but it's my understanding that if a possibility based on our tree program, we try to replace every year trees that have been removed. However, we do take into consideration of power lines. We're trying to work to, because of the maintenance and issues that can be caused with trees under power lines or going into power lines, but it's my understanding, because every year Nick applies for tree grants or receives X amount of trees, and it's, you know, their purpose to replace trees that have to be, that are taken down due to, like for example, but we don't have an actual program specifically in place for all the ash trees that are coming down. Like some communities have an actual replacement program.
So if a community member has a tree removed from, say, the front of their house along the street, could they request that the tree be replaced despite the city?
Yep, they can contact, they can contact me or either Nick.
Yeah, so we've put out announcements to have residents call City Hall or message us, and we will put their address on the list. We just did a couple homes earlier this spring, and then we did a couple just like two weeks ago to fulfill those. Track a little bit. Some locations will not get a tree back due to water lines, electrical lines, and then just some were placed a long time ago, way too close to the intersection. So we're trying to have visibility a little.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
No. Anything else? No. Omar? City Manager Gertz?
Um, yes, so, and again, Councilmember Schultz can probably help me with some of the school. We have, there was a question that came in, sent over to Leo. It has to do with a drain, an upgrade to a drain cap. There was just some questions as it's in front of the Simpson Cottage townhomes. I think there was just questions because the top had changed. And again, I'll follow up with Leo to get more information, but it appears maybe there's the changes simply because of with the new road construction and drainage, making sure that debris or things don't clog up what was probably there existing. But now we'll let it flow a little more, but I will follow up with the individuals that were asking on that. When Leo and I, when he can tell me if I'm right or wrong, but I assumed. And then the other question, we had just another question about some, a tree line, and Leo's working with that on me on Rainbow and Max in there. We're gonna work with that and reach out to the homeowner on that as well. And then business owner Lisa Browning had followed up with me. I took accountability for miscommunicating, or we had a misunderstanding with regards to cleanup after an event. First of all, I'd like to say to the city staff, they did a wonderful job. The Children's Festival and the Latina Festival, I think everybody did a wonderful job as far as cleanup goes. But we just had a little miscommunication because there was some chalk left on some of the sidewalk near Lisa's business. So again, it was just looking through what extent of cleanup after those events that we're looking at. So at some point in time before next year's season starts, probably speak with a committee building and grounds and get a better process when it comes to the events. Look at that application again, bring in streets and and the sewer department and solid waste and just talk about that. Maybe there's a deposit fee like we've talked about before with RagBite. There's additional cleanup that we have to be, you know, just some ideas around that, but just trying to, I can understand from the business owner, you know, their storefront is being impacted by events that we definitely want to have participants and have that go on in our downtown, but because we're offering the street closure, maybe we just need to take some additional steps and get that clarified between the business owners and the city.
Yeah, makes sense. That's good.
And that is all I have.
City Clerk Hofer? Great. I have one. Somebody mentioned to me a while back, and I haven't brought it up yet, but correct me if I'm wrong, how this works, but the golf carts in town have to pay a fee and be licensed through the city, but then I think the state came through and said you cannot charge a fee to ATVs. So ATVs are not charged a fee. Golf carts are charged a fee. Had a golf cart driver come in and talk to me and said, maybe you could take away the fees from the golf carts as well, just so that it's, you know, fair across the board. I happen to think that one of the best things about a small town is that we do allow this kind of vehicle on the street, and so I like that. And I would just submit to you that as a suggestion. I don't, I don't know that that's a, what is the fee for the golf carts? Do we know what that is? 35, 25, 20? Okay, annually? Okay. And I think that goes to the police department as well, correct? That.
Yeah, so I mean, it's a revenue that goes to the police department. I mean, it is time for them to check and make sure that the golf cart is in operational order and that it is safe to be on the road. So I mean, it's something, I know that there are other communities that have went to that where they waived the fee at the same time they waived the ATV fee.
Right.
But we can certainly bring that up for, like you said, to maybe.
Yeah, just something, something to think about. I, you know, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other, but I wanted to pass it on since it was, since it was brought up. That's it. We'll move on to new business. We are making one change to the fire task force. Dana requested to, to take a break from that, and so I asked if Josh would step in as the chair and continue to work with the task force. Kara is the other representative who would stay on, but I just need a motion to approve this new appointment.
Motion.
Moved and seconded to approve the appointment. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries forward to zero. 8B, set the date for trick or treat trail from 5:00 to 6:00 PM on October 31st, and trick or treating in the city of West Liberty from 6:00 to 7:30 PM on October 31st. Is there a motion to approve? Moved and seconded to approve. I think this is standard dates and times that we've done. Any discussion about this? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries forward to zero. We have a discussion on adding the closure of Spencer Street for the Holiday Open House for the petting zoo. Let's discuss this here and then we'll take action. Is that you, Mr. Brooks? Okay. You're fine. Yeah, just, just tell us what we're looking at here.
I've been out trying to get things for the Holiday Open House, and somebody just walked into a wee wee building, and they actually have a petting zoo in Muscatine County. They work out of the Ag Building in on Lucas Street in Muscatine. They're really well known in Muscatine. They go to the Muscatine Farmers Market. And he came in and asking and gave me a deal for the entire weekend. So it would be Saturday, November 18th from 10:00 to 4:00, and Sunday, November 19th from 1:00 to 5:00. Chambers paying the bill. But you could have feed, and he's got nine to, depending on the weekend, hide the 12 different animals. It would be an enclosed area with his, I believe, he didn't describe it as a semi truck, but it would only need to be on one side of Spencer, like the mural side, but because of animals, humans in the road, we're just looking to close in the alley to.
We just had a discussion about cleanup after downtown events, so how does that work with this?
Well, it's all enclosed, so it's all in his trailer. So I have contacted other vendors that are at Muscatine Farmers Market, and it's all, it's like a walk-in trailer. It's a walk-in.
Oh.
Animals are not grown.
I see.
And it's like humane. It's not like.
From the farmers market vendors that I've talked to, he's very clean. He's very focused on the animals. He also helps affect county fair.
So you're just asking that to close the street? There to, that is what you're asking. Okay, is there a motion to approve the request to close the street per this memo?
Motion. Second.
Moved and seconded to approve this request. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries forward to zero. Thanks, Charles. Brooke, I said Brooks. I'm sorry. There's too many Brooke, Brooks in this town for me to keep straight. There's just enough. Just enough.
No more.
You sat on different sides of the aisle at a wedding. Okay. We are moving on to item 8D, a resolution to approve pay estimate number seven from All American Concrete for Rainbow Maxon Street Project. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve this resolution. Mr. Foley?
Let's give you a little update on what's going on with the project.
Yes.
I heard City Manager Gertz talking about, I believe it's an intake over by the Simpson Home, and it is one that we had to modify because of ADA, and we were trying to put the sidewalk in. I think it, did not get to look at it. I was late getting here. It was dark. But I heard that it looked real good and that we had to make just a modification lower in the back. I think it will function beautifully, so I think we're good there. The other things that are going on are the relocation of the power poles has been a getting two engineering firms and two construction firms on the same page. Sometimes it's the easiest of challenges. So they've had to stake the poles for the power poles a couple of different times now, but they've got them staked now. All American's gonna move dirt so that the Keewee can get in and do it, so it's all coordinated in writing and should be, should be good to go at this point. Everything's here from what I understand. All is great. The lighting for the trail, the bases have all been poured. Again, all that material's here. They are having trouble with the control panel. Control panels still, I hate to keep using the word, but because of the pandemic, there's still problems with getting control panels for lots of different things. So they may not have that till the spring, but he can still get all of the lights up. He can get them working. He just won't be able to have them on a control where they go on and off. So that'll wait till spring. It sounds like he's still gonna get all the trail in. It sounds like all the rest of it should fall into place pretty well. The sidewalk that goes down Columbus, we still have in Ian Kay's hands, a little bit of coordination to do with some of the landowners, and I'm hoping to do that this coming next week. And I think that's all we have on our, I recommend payment.
Thank you, Leo. We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution, the pay estimate. Any further discussion? It's a roll call vote. Councilmember Dominguez?
Yep.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Shilts?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
The motion passes four to zero. We have a resolution to establish a public purpose for certain purchases. This came up. Sorry, let me ask, is there a motion to approve?
Motion. Back there.
Moved and seconded to approve this resolution. This came up with the last audit. I don't know if you remember from the review. I think we maybe discussed it, but something that seems pretty typical, but the auditor wanted to see this policy. This basically covers, like the example that we see is when we have a long meeting, and then sometimes bring in food for us in the meeting. And the auditor said, that's gray area because unless you have a written policy, it could be construed as using public money to pay for, for food, which you have to eat anyway, and that's, that's, you know, allowable if there's a policy, but you just need to have it in writing. So that's what this does. I think Omar did his best to convince City Manager Gertz to have food for us tonight. How did that go? Oh, you didn't make the call? Oh, he said he wanted.
I would have said, wait, until we have the policy.
Did I not, did I not say that? Did I not say that? I told him. I know exactly what she's gonna say. Because we had a very long meeting. We started at 5:30 here tonight, so. You can read all the kind of listed purposes there, but that is the purpose for it. Any other discussion about that?
Question, is it normal to put like a not to exceed blah 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 on this, or is it normal to just leave it par blanche? So we wouldn't exceed anything outside of our budget. So when council sets the budget, we also have most folks have gone away from like a per diem, because you don't always know with training. But again, it would be as long as it's not outside of our budget. I don't know, clerk. Offer, you heard anything from, I mean, this is a, is an actual resolution that we borrowed from another community, and we reviewed a few of them, and pretty much straightforward and as you see.
Yeah.
Yeah, I went out to clerk's and made sure that he had sent me this, and I went up to clerk's and just to see how they were written, and almost every city is written the same exact way. So.
So with the per diem, I know the state sets per diems, and I know it's different, but it's still public funding. So if we were to have lunch meeting or something, we would, when we submit those purchases, they need to know how many people were there, and if it was over the per diem, the state set per diem, we'd have to have a justification and like all of that. Do we need that in the policy? No?
Okay.
This is just saying that you can have meals for for, for the purpose. But it's specific, it's stating that these are the only reasons why you would have meals. But when we, when we do this, we have to say that it was this training. It was this work session. So like if we have a budget training, or if we have a strategic planning session, you have to say specifically what it was. You just can't say it was a meal. You know, you do have to provide the details of what the program was. A lot of times, even before the policy, what we would do is we would always tie whatever the agenda, whatever the conference or the training was, along with the receipt. But in the past, that had been, that had worked, but now what our others are saying for public purposes, we need to have a policy communicating what that with the challenges, with the meals of those trainings or get together. So. And this isn't just for city leadership. This would be for all of our staff, our our police department, our fire department. I think we even have the library in there too. Which I know they have their policies, but this just takes it even further to say the council recognizes that. In this, because I'm seeing all the non-alcoholic stuff that doesn't pertain to the fire department. So the non-alcoholic is, so that's a statewide, you are not to use public funds to purchase. Okay, but that's not necessarily, it can still be on the premises, just not purchased with the right fund. Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. It is again a roll call vote. Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Shilts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez? The resolution, the motion passes four to zero. Our, next to the last item tonight for the adjournment is setting a date for committee meeting as a whole to discuss items that need to be expedited outside of normal committee meetings. This is something that City Manager Gertz asked for. Is there a motion to, well, I guess we need to set the, choose the date here first, but Lee, do you want to just talk, talk over kind of what your vision for that is?
Yeah. And we called it as a committee meeting as a whole, where we can even say work session, but we've been working over the past year on a couple of these things, and we and we all know we've been very busy, and we've been picking up extra meetings for other priorities. So we just thought that in order to expedite these things along, that maybe we just set a work session as a committee as a whole to talk about the signs where we need to have the signs placed. If there's any questions or, or anything more that council would have to bring, and then along with the interconnect agreement, there's a little more work with that. We had originally taken it to the utility committee, but again, to expedite it because this would allow the solar. We have several individuals that have been waiting a long time to have the capability of solar and having Uh we have several um individuals that have been waiting a long time to have the capability of solar and having. Um interconnect agreement in order to connect into the city's uh. Power source, so um it was just my recommendation that we just. Have a work session and go through all this information and then have it prepared for the next meeting versus going to committee. Then bringing it to a work session, then bringing it back for the, but that would be entirely lifting handles how they would like the person.
Do you feel like that? That's out of step to do it altogether. I mean, some of those are gonna need a work session, you feel like, or could just be done in committee and then brought to the meeting?
Probably the signage would not have to, but I but our practice historically has been that. The public safety committee would go and then they would review all the signage information. And that's gonna be an amendment to the ordinance. Um so I mean, there's some additional steps when you're amending the ordinance and then likewise with the. The interconnect agreement um and policy, I mean, that's a little more education as to what. That pertains to um the types of meters that can pass inspection, so. You know, it was just our thought process to instead of taking it to a committee meeting, but I'm perfectly fine with that.
How do you guys want to handle that?
So if they wanna.
Do committees or do one big meeting for everybody?
I think you should do one big meeting, but I don't think my opinion is that relevant because I'm gonna be leaving soon by one, October fifteenth. So I'll be able to be here to present. I will do the best I can to connect the Zoom, but um I'm taking F M L A leave. Do your home improvement or show recovery for a few months, so um do whatever you need to do.
Say we had a large meeting to cover these items, would that kind of help catch us up? And then we could always move forward back the way we previously done it.
Yeah, these are, these are things that have been on the table for well more than a year. And like I said, the bigger part of it is if you have individuals that are um interested in purchasing solar. Um and they're not able to move forward with that. That decision until you know the city can afford as to what we're gonna do with the with that um option. And likewise with the signage, we, it just seems like we're. Well, the good news is is that time has been on our side, I suppose, because we, I'm in chief is here, we we've got more signs that we need to add to that. Um and that was kind of also what we were waiting to do, but I know that there's an importance of the signage downtown for stop sign. At Spencer and Third Street, and then there's some more that's come up around the school district. And then um likewise at Liberty Park, um there was a request for no parking signs there as well.
I think moving forward, doing it this way would be just fine. At least for this. Situation, just to kind of catch up.
My. And I would and I would like to recommend that we would. We can plan it around either before the very, the next meeting or that would probably be the better time.
Do a work session on October seventeenth at six P M. Yep, that fits.
And I will be out at a training, but I'll be able to resume then. But a lot of this information, um I'm confident in Kirk Crawford and.
As I said, there's a special meeting at seven.
On the seventeen?
Seventeen.
A city council special meeting at seven.
Oh yeah, seven o'clock was our evaluation view.
Yeah, that's the evaluation. Yep.
That's right, and I would, I have a, I'll be out of the training, but I can do that through Zoom.
It'll just have to be a separate room so that it can be the closed session for that portion, but we can do it that way.
For the evaluation meeting or with the.
The evaluation already said.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I can just, I'll just, I'll rearrange. I'll 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 just see if I can get a refund back on the training.
Oh.
I'll have to be here in person.
Oh, I don't think that's.
You can just zoom in. You're available.
Because then I can during the closed session, I can have everybody leave and then I.
What's what's the training you're going to?
It's um employee H R, human resources, the I, employment conference.
One side, one more side.
Um afterwards, well, it's all day after the eighteenth, but our first class starts at seven. Maybe at the hotel.
Yeah. On the seventeenth should be at the hotel.
But I mean, I have time to to change that. I didn't.
I mean, it's not ideal, but I think we can probably work with it though by Zoom, I guess, right?
Yeah.
We'll be all right.
Say, don't cancel it. Don't the thing. Just if you can zoom in, zoom in.
Yeah. And then I did also want to let you guys know, because you guys are scheduling it right now, Emily and I are out at I M O A. The eighteenth, nineteenth and twentieth. That's to finish up credits and then that will start her on her credits for.
On Monday, the twentieth there.
And this als- I mean, this is also something now that we're getting, I mean, if we need to wait until the first part of November even with this. This discussion, that's fine too, uh because we're getting into the colder months, so a lot of the signage. I think it's it's gonna be. We'll be okay. And likewise with the interfect policy as long as.
That'd be fine.
We're gonna need some time to put about meters.
Monday, the thirtieth? Sounds like Monday, the thirtieth might work.
And at what time?
Like six P M?
Is everybody good with six P M on the thirtieth?
Okay, so let's be clear. On the seventeenth, we have. Seven P M is Lee's evaluation. That's. Again, just to be, just to clarify.
I think it's earlier than so. Um the special meeting on the twelfth, which is Thursday, I mean, on this. The fifth, the fifth is at seven P M, but I think Lee's is at six or six thirty.
Fifth is at seven.
Yes, the fifth is at seven.
Mm-hmm, yes.
For some reason, I didn't have the seventeenth on my.
Six P M.
Calendar. Okay, I just have it as a work session.
Seventeenth at six P M is Lee's uh evaluation.
Uh special meeting for budget amendment and.
Seven, seven. Yep, on Thursday is at seven and then Lee's is at six.
This Thursday at five, seven o'clock.
No.
Nah.
I'm sorry, this Thursday, the fifth is what I meant to say. This Thursday, I was trying to make it clear and I made it worse. This Thursday, October fifth.
Yeah.
At seven P M.
Yes.
At City Hall.
Yes.
Special city council meeting, just for a budget amendment and.
Annexation.
Annexation.
Yeah.
Then the seventeenth, October seventeenth at six P M. Evaluation for Lee, followed by regular city council meeting at at seven thirty. Then October thirtieth. At six P M. Uh we'll call it a work session or committee meeting of of the whole to uh kind of work through some of these items that have been waiting. Okay, so we need a motion to uh set the date for this committee meeting for Monday, October thirtieth at six P M.
Motion to do that.
Okay, I think we can accept that motion and a second to uh set the date for this committee meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries four to zero. So are you, Ashley?
Motion this and I would like to motion to adjourn this.
Second.
Move the second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn. Thank you, everybody.